Welcome everyone and thanks for sticking around this afternoon to join us for this special session. We're very excited for the opportunity to showcase Program Science at CAR 2021, and we're grateful to CAR for this platform. Before we begin, we want to acknowledge that the Institute for Global Public Health at the University of Manitoba is located on Treaty I territory in Winnipeg. Treaty I is the original lands of the Anishinaabe Cree, Ojibwe Cree, Dakota and Dene people, and it's the homeland of the Métis Nation. So without further ado, here's an overview of Program Science that we've put together with some illustrative examples highlighting how our team has applied the approach in hopes of stimulating further discussion around the use of Program Science for other research. We'll happily welcome any questions at the end of the session, and please feel free to use the chat box during the presentation. Welcome and thanks for joining us for our webinar, Using Program Science to Improve Outcomes in HIV Prevention and Care: Contexts, Communities, and Collaborations in Knowledge Production. We're so grateful to CAR for providing the opportunity and support to share some of this great work that our group has been doing in Kenya. Our presentation will begin by providing a brief introduction to the concept of Program Science. What is it and how does it differ from other program implementation approaches? Next, we will walk through a case study to illustrate what Program Science looks like in practice. We introduce a community-led HIV self-testing program that was implemented in three districts in Kenya: Mombasa, Kyambu, and Kisumu. We will specifically discuss the planning, implementation, and program monitoring processes of this Program Science project and provide an overview of some results that have come out of the program. Finally, the presentation will finish up with an overview of lessons learned during implementation, and we will reiterate the ways in which this HIV self-testing project used a Program Science approach. So before we begin, I will just take a couple of minutes to introduce our speakers today in the order that they will be presenting. First up, Marissa Becker is an HIV physician and researcher, the Associate Director of the Manitoba HIV Program and an Associate Professor in the Institute for Global Public Health at the University of Manitoba. Using a Program Science framework, Marissa's research focuses on understanding HIV risk, vulnerability, and outcomes among vulnerable populations in Canada and globally. Next, Parinita Badacharji is the Director of Program Delivery at the Institute for Global Public Health at the U of M and is currently based in Nairobi. Throughout her career, Parinita has held various leadership positions, conducting research, implementing large-scale HIV programs for key populations, and developing policy frameworks in India and Kenya. Bernadette Kina is a Kenya-based social science researcher and a first-year PhD student in the Department of Community Health Sciences at the University of Manitoba. Her research experience has primarily been with key populations in Kenya, focusing on improving the uptake of HIV prevention services and community engagement strategies. Manas Migot is a passionate key population program implementer, enthusiastic human rights defender, and a relentless activist for the LGBT population. He began his career as a peer educator and continues to work as a human rights activist, a sexual orientation and gender identity advocate, and a project officer at Mago, through which he was actively involved in the HIV self-testing project as a program implementer and site coordinator. Memory Mellon is the Regional Field Coordinator for Western Kenya, working with Partners for Health and Development in Africa through the National AIDS and STI Control Program. Memory has extensive experience working with key populations through the provision of technical support to implementing partners and the Kenyan Ministry of Health. She has actively participated in the development of various key population implementation guides and tools, including the Kenya National Guideline for HIV STI Programming with Key Populations. Our last presenter is Robert Lorway. He's an Associate Professor of Medical Anthropology in the Institute for Global Public Health, where he also holds the Canada Research Chair in Global Intervention Politics and Social Transformation. Rob uses ethnographic approaches to examine how large-scale global health interventions lead to political and social change. Finally, Lisa Lazarus and I, Lee McClarty, will be your moderators for today. Lisa is a Research Associate at the Institute for Global Public Health and a community-based researcher whose work centers on community-led HIV prevention and treatment interventions. I am currently a postdoctoral fellow at the Institute for Global Public Health, and my research focuses on using a Program Science approach to optimize the delivery and uptake of HIV care and prevention services. So I'll just hand it over to Marissa now to give a brief overview of Program Science.
Thanks very much, Lee. I'm going to begin by providing a brief introduction and overview of Program Science. Program Science was defined by Dr. James Blanchard from the University of Manitoba and Dr. Sevkiy Ralph from the Centers for Disease Control in Atlanta in 2010 and published here in 2011. Program Science can be defined as the systematic application of theoretical and empirical scientific knowledge to improve the design, implementation, and evaluation of public health programs. It arose from work that Dr. Blanchard and team were involved with in South India. At that time, the team was implementing HIV prevention programs at scale and recognized the need to bring science and programs and those involved in both closer together. Here we illustrate some of the key characteristics of Program Science. The first is that it is both a research and a program framework. It's multi-phased and iterative so that knowledge generated is used to inform each step of program design and implementation, and programs set or drive the research agenda such that key challenges faced by programs or key policy-knowledge gaps really drive the process of scientific inquiry. Research through Program Science aims to achieve health impact and equity, and it does this through maximizing the population-level impact of a program by optimizing the choice of the right strategies for the right populations at the appropriate time. Science is embedded within programs; it's not standalone research. Through using a Program Science approach, those involved strive to ensure sustained engagement over an extended period of time beyond a discrete project. And finally, Program Science aims to bridge the disconnect that often occurs between those engaged in research with community, program planners, managers, and policymakers. Program Science has its roots in the understanding that there's a difference between a public health intervention and a public health program. If we consider a public health intervention, it's often a technological or behavioral intervention or modality that's designed for or focused on a particular group, and principles of effectiveness, fidelity, and coverage are important principles for implementation of that intervention. Whereas Program Science works in the broader framework of a public health program, in which it's understood that public health programs and the public health challenge that the program is trying to address are complex and involve complex systems with emergent properties, and this requires multiple components or interventions that are tailored for a specific context and in which the goal is the population-level impact. Question often comes up as to whether Program Science is just good program management. And I think that Doctors Blanchard and Ralph would both be the first to say that many good programs do Program Science, might not name it as such, but are doing it through the work that they do. But not all programs are able to do so, and that's likely due to a number of reasons. And in fact, using Program Science should yield good program management. Program Science seeks to develop new insights and knowledge that can be translated into the design and implementation of programs. New knowledge might emerge in a multitude of areas, including better approaches to appraising epidemics and understanding transmission dynamics, novel approaches for impact evaluation, as well as expansion into new scientific fields. Program Science follows along the stages of a program cycle, from strategic planning to program implementation, and then program monitoring and evaluation. At the strategic planning phase, Program Science can help to answer and inform program priorities and resource allocation. It can help to examine the local epidemiologic context, answering the who, why, and where programs should be designed for. At the program implementation stage, Program Science can be used to address important questions related to the intervention mix and the platforms or modalities in which to deliver services or interventions. And finally, Program Science moves to ensure a continual and systematic approach to monitoring and evaluation, specifically to allow the measurement of program coverage to examine disparities and opportunity gaps. Routine monitoring may be complemented by additional quantitative and qualitative research to dig deeper. Collectively, then, this knowledge is iteratively used to inform and optimize each stage of the program cycle. Currently, there are many important, different types of frameworks and scientific approaches out there with overlapping characteristics and principles. For example, implementation science and program science share a lot of really important features. Here, though, we illustrate or highlight what we also see as a couple of differences between these approaches. Implementation science, as it usually, but not always, is conceptualized and practiced, focuses on identifying and scaling up a single evidence-based intervention, whereas Program Science focuses on the totality of a program comprising multiple components or interventions and allows for adjustments or refinements along the way. Similarly, Program Science and translational research also have overlapping features, but often translational research is focused on how to get scientific evidence or research into practice or grip, as Parker Stedall called it, whereas Program Science emphasizes getting research out of practice or grip. And I want to just finish by touching on why we use this approach. For our teams, Program Science has been really formative in shaping how we approach our research and the work that we do. Program Science ensures that research questions are driven by key program knowledge gaps and identified priorities, and that knowledge generated is used to inform and optimize programs. It allows for flexibility by enabling the continual identification of and response to program complexities as they emerge. It also gives space and focus to multidisciplinary teams to bring the diverse strengths into synergy, and it facilitates the building of intersectoral partnerships that last beyond single projects and funding turnover, creating a sustainable foundation for further intervention. And with that, I'm going to stop and hand it over to Parinita, who will share a case study from Kenya, which we feel helps to illustrate an example of Program Science in action.
Thank you, Marissa. My colleagues and I will share a case study from Kenya. In this case study, we are going to showcase how we use Program Science approach to design, implement, monitor, and evaluate an intervention related to HIV self-testing among gay, bisexual, and other men who have sex with men in Kenya. This HIV self-testing project was embedded with an ongoing large-scale HIV prevention programs for GBMSM in the three sites in Kenya. I wanted to contextualize the HIV intervention for you. As I mentioned earlier, the intervention was implemented in Kenya. In Kenya, HIV prevalence among gay, bisexual, and other men who have sex with men is 18.2%, almost six times higher than men in general population, as HIV prevalence among adult men in Kenya is 3.1% only. Our studies have further shown that HIV prevalence among GBMSM who seek partners solely in the virtual sites, like using dating apps, Facebook pages, or WhatsApp groups, is even higher at 26.7%. Mapping and population size estimation exercises conducted in Kenya estimate around 50,000 GBMSM in Kenya who seek other male sexual partners in physical sites, like bars and streets and virtual sites, as I explained before. However, our annual outcome studies also show that 32% of GBMSM are not reached by services meant for them. So almost around one-third of MSM are left out of HIV prevention programs. We all know why it is important to be aware of one's HIV status. HIV testing and early awareness of HIV status allows early entry to HIV prevention and treatment. However, our program data shows that only 59% of estimated GBMSM who are living with HIV are aware of their HIV-positive status in Kenya. If you remember, the global target is actually 90%, and we are moving towards 95%. Same-sex relationships are criminalized in Kenya, and GBMSM experience high violence, stigma, and discrimination. All these do act as barriers to access to services and information for this population. It is in this context that this project was designed and implemented. We had several objectives to the project. We wanted to estimate the size of the undiagnosed GBMSM population living with HIV, and through the interventions, reach out to this population who have never tested or are infrequent testers so that they get to know their HIV status and link with prevention and treatment services. So HIV Self-Testing Kit, which was identified as a safe and accessible product, was introduced to achieve these objectives. The hypothesis was that introduction of HIV self-testing kits will increase coverage, frequency, and early uptake of HIV testing among GBMSM, which in turn will increase awareness of HIV status among the population, and subsequently, early entry into HIV prevention and treatment programs. The interventions took place in three counties: Mombasa, Kyambu, and Kisumu, geographically scattered across Kenya. It was 12 months intervention and focused on reaching the unreached GBMSM through generating demand for HIV testing, increasing availability of HIV self-testing kit by distributing free HIV self-testing kits. In Kenya, for the priority populations, which include key populations, girls and young women, adolescent and young people, and others, HIV self-testing kits are distributed free. And then, after distribution, linking those who are aware of their HIV-positive status to treatment and those who were HIV-negative to prevention. In the later stage, when we discuss about interventions, we're going to go more details into each of these elements. So partnerships are very important in Program Science, exactly what Marissa in her presentation did say in the beginning. So partnerships has been also very, very critical in this intervention, too. At the intervention level, we partnered with three MSM-led organizations: Hapa Kenya in Mombasa, Mago in Kisumu, and MPEC in Kyambu. Along with the three MSM-led organizations, we also partnered with the county governments in the three counties. The governments really helped us create an enabling environment for implementation of this project. University of Manitoba and G10, a network of MSM-led researchers in Kenya, led the evaluation of the interventions. And the National AIDS and STI Control Program, we call it NASCOB, under the Ministry of Health, led the policy development work. So all the partners worked in collaboration, but of course, had their unique roles within this consortium. I would also specify here that the University of Manitoba have a longstanding partnership with NASCOB as we provide technical support to the national HIV response to scale up key population program. At this point, I also have to acknowledge that Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation funded this intervention, and we also engaged in this intervention quite actively. I would now invite Bernadette to talk about a key element of the intervention using Program Science approach, and that is strategic planning. Bernadette?
Thank you, Parinita. So as Marissa showed earlier, strategic planning is at the core of Program Science. It centers on making informed decisions, which then helps with identifying and setting of program priorities and with planning for resource allocation. What is also important for strategic planning is the understanding of local epidemiological context, which answers the questions of who is affected, what drives the transmission, and in which geographic regions we have most affected populations. Those questions are then answered through different approaches, which then help with making informed decisions for the intervention. For instance, in our case, we had moments of building partnerships, co-creation of strategic planning agenda, such as in protocol development. We had a protocol development workshop, baseline qualitative inquiry. We also had social and sexual network survey and a baseline bio-behavioral survey. So on the collaborations and partnership building, which was important for the success of this project, it was based on the fact that LGBTI and GBMSM-led organizations are very well organized in Kenya, including the fact that they have a research advisory committee that is popularly known as G10. So Kenya National AIDS and STI Control Program, that is NASCOB, together with the University of Manitoba, they approached G10 and its partners in Kisumu, Mombasa, and Kyambu. G10 then identified three community-based organizations to participate in their project. They selected CBOs. Each had an extensive experience in implementing projects with large program reach and also large membership base. Together, the team then did some exploratory work, including virtual mapping and qualitative consultations that helped with protocol development and firming up of their partnerships. So the second source of information for the informed decisions is what we call co-creation of the strategic planning agenda, of which we developed partnership agreement with the clear roles and responsibilities. And that consensus led to University of Manitoba taking up the role of overseeing the evaluation, the community-based organization taking charge of the study implementation. Then we had NASCOB being responsible for police and advocacy. So besides, there were point persons from each of the partners who are part of the investigators and also formed the core team for oversight and decision-making. But what is important to note that despite each having their own roles and responsibilities, generally, the team worked in collaboration with each partner, supporting each other in the implementation or rather, execution of their roles. Okay, so as we mentioned, we also did some baseline qualitative work to inform the intervention. So what we did, we established a qualitative cohort, and the community-based organization recruited community researchers who are then trained in doing the interviews and also analyzing qualitative data. So from the interviews, what generally came out was that GBMSM, they were relating HIV self-testing technology to their context of their daily lives and their social world. Looking at this cohort, for example, it's a participant from Mombasa who is talking about disclosure of HIV status to neighbors after disposing a used self-test kit. In summary, what we are saying from the qualitative interview, the participants shared their perceptions on the benefits and challenges of HIV self-testing, and they also gave their opinion on the best approaches for delivering kits to the GBMSM community. So the outcome from these interviews, they led to considerations for community-based distribution, distribution at hotspots, partner distribution, and also use of social media for mobilization during intervention. Another source of information for the intervention was the social and sexual network survey, which was a cellphone-based network survey that involved first selecting seeds using nicknames and the last four digits of cellphone numbers. They would name 15 sexual and 15 social contacts, making a total of 30. From their 15 sexual contacts, they would then select three and considering age and whether these individuals are enrolled in program or not enrolled. And then, they will be contacted and then repeat that process of listing their sexual contacts and social contacts. So from this survey, we basically found that they're both homogeneous and mixed networks that still had mixed HIV testing behaviors. And what this meant, then, is a possibility of reaching the non-and-infrequent testers using those who test frequently, as well as reaching to non-members of the programs through those who are already members in the programs. And then, finally, what we had as another source of information for our intervention, we conducted a baseline bio-behavioral survey with 1,200 GBMSM participants, who were distributed equally in the three participating sites. So the sample was selected from both physical and virtual hotspots. And the participants were then taken through an interview. And during that interview, they provided a blood sample that was used for HIV testing. So from this survey, we found that over one-third of respondents, they reported having more than three male sexual partners in the past month. 10% identified as sex workers, and the most common venues where they were finding their male sexual partners were on virtual platforms from bars and even restaurants. And on HIV testing, 97% of the participants had ever tested. Only 47 had tested three times or even more in the last one year, as is recommended in our guidelines. And HIV prevalence was generally higher among those who tested infrequently, of which those who had never tested, 22% tested positive, and 80% expressed interest in using HIV self-test kits every quarter if they're made available. Again, with qualitative findings, and then also the findings from the network survey, these findings also contributed to the intervention in terms of strategies to use HIV self-testing and the people to target with HIV self-testing. So with this, Migot will tell us about these strategies.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be presenting on our program implementation. So I'll take you through the intervention phase of HIV self-testing. And through this presentation or slide, I'll take you through the main goal of the study. And of course, I'll also take you through the strategies and the activities undertaken through this study. So the main goal of the intervention was to increase coverage and frequency on testing and link HIV to care and treatment. For those who are testing, for HIV self-test users who are testing positive, we'd link them to HIV treatment services. And for those who are testing negative, we'd link them to HIV prevention services. We had three major strategies, and that was demand creation, service delivery, and linkage. Under demand creation, there was assessed effective strategies for mobilization and creating demand for HIV self-test, including engagement of both physical and virtual peer educators. Physical peer educators were mobilizing through physical hotspots. And of course, virtual peer educators were mobilizing through virtual platforms, that is, Facebook, WhatsApp, and other dating sites. Service delivery, there was various distribution mechanisms were used among GBMSM, we focused on infrequent or non testers. And of course, on linkage, we focused on connecting HIV self-test users to prevention and treatment services. So under demand creation, which is one of the strategies that were adopted during intervention phase, we had the provision of information on HIV self-test at physical hotspots and through social media. And among the social media platforms, we had Facebook, WhatsApp, and also dating sites. And just to name a few of the dating sites that we embraced or rather, we adopted were Vadoo, Onnit, and of course, Brinder. These were done by peer educators, both at physical and virtually. And of course, we also had super-mobilizers who are mobilizing peers from their social platforms. Of course, these were not officially engaged peer educators, but of course, by virtue of being peer educators or other peers with huge social followers, they were engaged by different programs to mobilize different peers for the study. Of course, we also had provision of information on HIV self-test by healthcare providers at psychiatric drop-in centers and clinical outreachers. We also had the use of interpersonal communication materials. These were posters with HIV self-test messages distributed by peer educators and I shared through virtual platforms such as Facebook and WhatsApp and so on. We also had social events, including DJ nights, fun days, or late-day commemoration, GBMSM-themed parties, and also let's-get-real events. Lastly, we had print media materials to promote HIV self-test, and among these were t-shirts, abronshoes, banners, uphorns for bar horse thesis, rider's safety reflectors, and posters at toilets of the club-based hotspots. The second strategy was delivery and linkage. And through delivery and linkage, we had distribution and delivery. And of course, we also had linkage for prevention and treatment services. Under distribution and delivery, we had distribution at hotspot. And we also had distribution at drop-in centers. We had distribution at governing facilities. And of course, with the dynamics in the intervention phase, we also had the courier being embraced by different programs to transport HIV self-test kits to different locations. We had peers using their homes as places of distribution. And of course, we also had virtual peer educators using different virtual platforms to have peers that they could distribute their HIV self-test kits to. And the second was on distribution done by peer educators and healthcare providers. These were done mainly by the HTS, that is, the HIV testing service providers. We had HTS providers taking lead in distribution of HIV self-test at the clinic. And of course, we also had peer educators taking lead in distribution of HIV self-test at the community level. We also had distribution by peers with the largest social and sexual networks, that is, the super-mobilizers. And under linkage for prevention and treatment services, we had decentralized follow-up through phone calls by clinic team with support from peer educators for untraced with no contacts and also non-constant GBMSM. When I say this, I mean their follow-up system was centralized to make sure that they were able to communicate with their peers. When I say this, I mean the follow-up system was centralized to mean the clinical officers were taking lead in following up the clients who had used the HIV self-test kit. But of course, when we had cases of peers not presenting with the valid contact forms and of course, those who could not be traced and of those who could not also give their consent to be traced, we had the peer educators taking lead in tracing them, they could trace them physically. We also had escorted referrals for assisted HIV self-test. And of course, we had referral cards with clinic contacts provided alongside the kits. That is the GBMSM call or text the clinic team. So the numbers that were provided at the cards could either be used for calling or used for texting. In any case, the peers need information from the clinic regarding HIV self-test. Implementation during COVID-19, we had a couple of challenges, but of course, we had to be strong and we also had to be resilient because it was just prudent for us to proceed with service delivery amidst COVID-19 invasion. So I'll take you through some of the activities and innovations that we embraced during COVID-19 period. One of the strategies that we used was refocusing on virtual mobilization and demand creation for HIV self-test communication materials. We had short messages and videos being uploaded on YouTube. And of course, the sensitization and virtual videos being done through live shows on Facebook. Initially, we used to do DJ nights physically. But of course, with COVID-19, we couldn't do that because we had to adhere to the COVID-19 prevention measures enforced by the national and county governments. So we could do this virtually through Facebook and other social media platforms. We had integration of HIV self-test promotional messages with COVID-19-related messages. During this time, we had a lot of information being conveyed on prevention of COVID-19 messages. So we utilized these platforms to actually convey messages regarding HIV self-test intervention. Thirdly, we had the delivery of HIV self-test and HIV services through use of motorbikes, mobile vans. And of course, we also did door-to-door under courier that I just talked about in the other slide. Lastly, we had HIV self-test provision to frequent testers during COVID-19. We all know that our primary targets for HIV self-test intervention were infrequent and non testers, but of course, during COVID-19 period, we had a gap on rapid testing, HIV testing. So in order to fill this, or rather, break this gap, we used the intervention to actually distribute HIV self-test kits to frequent testers for them to continue getting tested on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tim. I will take you through the program management section. So on process mention and evaluation methods, data was derived from both qualitative and quantitative data sources. This included monthly meeting reports, where we had twelve monthly meetings in each study site together with implementing partners. So these meetings were facilitated by the PhD general coordinators and these discussions were captured in a standard meeting guide template. So for the monthly meeting reports, they focused mainly on measuring feasibility just in terms of really understanding the challenges that were faced in the course of the intervention and how they overcome. Coverage, really to get to understand the extent to which the gay, bisexual and other men who have sex with men came into contact with the intervention. And quality to measure how well the interventions were delivered. And then again, the reports were further analyzed on a quarterly basis to assess the emerging themes and discussions conducted with the implementation team, really to track on the progress of the intervention and make any necessary adjustments that were required. Then secondly, we also had monthly monetary reports. And for these reports, they were quantitative in nature and they were generated on a monthly basis by the implementation team. So really similar to the monthly meeting reports, you also had standard format that was used across the three participating sites. And the focus on the monetary report was mainly to assess coverage of the intervention. Again, these reports were equally reviewed and analyzed on a monthly basis using graphs and charts. And discussions were consequently made together with the implementation team just to look into the areas of gaps and for improvement purposes. And then again, thirdly, we had, we used the in-depth interviews, which were qualitative in nature. So for these interviews, they were administered by the GBMSM community, who were trained as qualitative researchers. And then again, they used an interview guide to administer the same to their fellow peers. So for the in-depth interviews, we had a cohort of GBMSMs who were followed for a period of twelve months during the intervention. And this was the period of baseline, midline and endline. The main aim of the in-depth interviews was to assess the feasibility and acceptability as regards the perceptions and opinions of the GBMSM on the intervention. So these interviews were audio-recorded, they were translated and transcription was equally undertaken by the team of GBMSMs who had their set skills. And then second to the last method that was also used was the rapid ethnographic assessments, which are basically informal conversations and observations with the implementing team. So these assessments were conducted by the qualitative coordinating team at the midline and endline of the intervention, with the endline assessment really focusing on the implementation during COVID-19 period. The assessments looked into the feasibility, acceptability and quality of the intervention and also related collection of artifacts in form of photographs or materials that were used during the entire period of the intervention. And then last but not least, we also used a polybo service, which had the main aim of measuring effectiveness in terms of just to understand as to whether the intervention led to the desired outcome. So polybo services have been widely used in Kenya, especially amongst the key populations. And these are basically population-based quantitative assessments, where we bring together a total of around ten to twelve homogeneous participants who give their responses through a ballot box. So the individual responses are usually anonymous and unlinked. Thus, it really minimizes the social disaffability bias that can occur during face-to-face interviews. Again, these surveys have really proven effective in monitoring sensitive behaviors, such as condom use, among others. So initially, we had planned for to conduct three rounds of polybo service, that is at the baseline, midline and endline. But we ended up conducting two rounds of polybo service at the baseline and endline due to the COVID-19 outbreak. So just to share with you some of the results of the intervention. So noting that HIV SD distribution was focused on infrequent and non testers, as been mentioned by the previous presenter. So if you look at the graph, it clearly shows that majority of the HIV SD kits, the beneficiaries were mainly the infrequent testers throughout the intervention period. But you can also see that you had some slight increase in kits distribution to the frequent testers around the month of April 2020. And that was just at the onset of COVID-19 outbreak, as some of the GBMSMs were unable to make it to the drop-in centers, of course, for the normal routine rapid testing. But again, we also had cases of GBMSMs living with HIV, receiving HIV self-test kits. And this was mainly for purposes of partner testing and as well as disclosure of HIV-positive status. As per the Kenya National Guidelines for the HIV SD Programming with the Key Populations 2014, it is clearly stipulated that eligible key populations are to be tested for HIV on a quarterly basis. So looking into the HIV testing in the past three months, the overall testing improved from seventy-five percent at baseline to seventy-eight percent in endline. But again, with significant improvements recorded among the virtual peers, as you can see, from sixty-three percent at baseline to seventy-five percent at endline. And then focusing on use of HIV SD kits in the last three months again, we also see a significant improvement from thirty-one percent at baseline to forty-seven percent in endline. And this was data that was derived mainly from the polybo survey. And really getting to understand some of the perspectives of the GBMSMs, and these were mainly elicited from the in-depth interviews. Most of them initially reported challenges on the use of the HIV SD kit. And these challenges ranged from lack of trust in the kit to not really being clear on how to use the kit. But in time, the narrative changed. Now using the kit more often, the GBMSMs really complimented the kit for being really confidential and convenient. So those who used the kit again during COVID-19 period indicated as really being helpful in assuring that the GBMSMs observed the set COVID-19 preventive measures, such as not really lining up in the clinic or crowding. And this was also alluded by one of the participants from Mombasa County, who reported that the kit helped in keeping distance as GBMSMs could test and know their status at the comfort of their homes without really going to line up in the hostels. So we have been able to use the results for different purposes, including improving programming to reach more GBMSMs. And really focus has shifted and has been laid on strengthening virtual outreach and service provision to the virtual GBMSMs. Again, really using virtual platforms such as Facebook, WhatsApp, dating sites, among others, to reach to GBMSMs within the virtual spaces for demand creation purposes. Also innovative ways have been developed to reach GBMSMs. The results have also been used for policy direction for scaling up HIV SD among the GBMSMs. And this has helped in development of guiding documents. And we have documents such as the HIV SD Technical Brief, that is currently in use in Kenya. And then similarly, the results are used in consideration of GBMSM program in quantifying or estimating the need of HIV SD commodities for procurement purposes. Lastly, these results are shared and disseminated in global platforms, such as the one we are in for purposes of learning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, memory. So why are we calling this a program science approach, many of you may still be asking? So to tie things together, this slide summarizes some of the key characteristics of program science that you heard about from us at the beginning of the presentation. And it relates to how the HIV self-testing program in Kenya operated. First, our HIV project emerged from the needs defined by the community and was concerned with the entire program, that is program design, implementation and evaluation. Second, the project engaged a diverse cast of multidisciplinary and multi-sectoral public health actors across the life cycle of the program. Third, we pursued an iterative approach that put research and programs into ongoing dialogue. Fourth, the iterative approach we took meant that the HIV self-testing project did not follow a rigid, linear path, but instead was much more flexible, allowing for the continual discovery of new things about the program as it ran, which were in turn fed back into the program. Fifth, and this is important to highlight, health officials were an integral part of the multi-sectoral program and research dialogues and processes that took place. And this really helped us to link our resultant learnings with health policy trajectories. So as an anthropologist who does ethnography, I've had the chance to observe on the ground, along with Bernadette, a number of things about the program science approach employed in the HIV self-testing project, which offers important broader lessons. First, I noticed that program science fosters a way of working together on a joint focus, that is the set of program goals. And this created dynamic synergies between various domains of practice, including health policy administration, academic health sciences and community health promotion. This joint focus created a more integrative way of working across these different domains. This was, of course, possible because of the opening up of ongoing lines of communication across these domains of practice. There were also synergies created between diverse forms of expertise and knowledge, including community wisdom, which should be underscored. A lot of co-learning happens between all of us. Now, with such varied types of thinkers and experiences, you might expect there to be differences in opinion. And a joint focus didn't eliminate these differences in perspectives or stomp out forms of debate. But because everybody became so invested in working through problems in a common direction, things eventually did move forward. The synergies that came through sharing a joint focus also occurred between different human, technical and informational infrastructures and resources. So sharing office space, photocopies for planning vehicles and food expenses and so on, helped our team to stretch our limited resources. The joint focus also brought together different types of responders from varied social, economic, experiential and national backgrounds. These extended interactions promoted bonding and social solidarity in a way that helped to build lasting relations of rapport. So those of you who have been a part of the HIV movement in Canada for a long time know all too well that these social textures are a crucial element in the sustainability of a vital response to the HIV epidemic. However, building the right intersectoral and multidisciplinary partnerships comes with a number of cautions. Relations of trust don't grow overnight, they must be carefully nurtured over time. The success of the HIV self-testing project that was discussed today builds on working relationships between health officials, researchers and community health activists in our group that stretched back for quite a number of years. Scientists need to be willing and committed to pursue unconventional findings that gain value and a direct and immediate utility in programs. Scientists working in a program science framework may not always discover a new association or key finding that holds relevance to their respective field, but their work does generate findings that can help solve problems that include successful program implementation. When you have academics and scientists, health officials and community activists working together, unequal power relationships are of course inevitable. And they do not vanish in program science, instead they are continually renegotiated. However, working closely with experienced community health activists and advocates as key partners ensures that the influence of power asymmetries are continually called out. The HIV self-testing project was unusual in terms of minimal conflicts. And this was likely because community activists were engaged and provided critical feedback at every step along the project, including the very beginning, during the proposal writing and protocol development phase. Another caution here is that community organizations need to possess a basic level of financial stability and should have some experience partnering with academics and health officials to successfully advance their own priorities throughout the life cycle of a program science project. The community-based organizations run by informed men who have sex with men, as Bernadette was saying, and who participated in the study, and certainly Migo can attest to this, were already highly experienced in working in partnership with international funders like the Global Fund, USAID and UNAIDS. However, if this is not the case, resource and infrastructure sharing, skills building and training and small-scale pilot projects may facilitate the building of capacity needed to meaningfully pursue a program science approach. So to conclude, I want to reemphasize the crucial role played by frontline program implementers and community health activists in program science projects, especially with respect to the production, interpretation and utilization of evidence. This ensures that program evidence is translated into knowledge forms that can facilitate ongoing decision-making around program refinement in ways that also maintains a commitment to social justice. In other words, through sustained community engagement in program science, technical knowledge gets translated into forms that are actually understandable and usable by those delivering programs and services. In the case of HIV self-testing, we saw that community who was directly involved in collecting and interpreting data played a leading role in designing the program in ways that incorporated their own social justice priorities. The direct involvement of communities in this way helps to ensure that teams work toward the goal of democratization in the production and use of scientific evidence and programs. This helps us to maintain a commitment to the important principles of having greater and meaningful involvement to people living with and most highly affected by HIV. Lastly, I want to underscore again the different role for academic health sciences. In program science, expert knowledge production and exploration is guided less by disciplinary-specific debates than by evolving dynamics and shifting contexts of local programs and community health priorities. What we might call scientific discoveries then, in a program science framework, have immediate, grounded and contextually-specific applicability. In other words, the trans-disciplinary findings and insights that emerge in program science can be swiftly and effectively translated and further evaluated within a living program.
Thanks so much to all of our presenters today, and I'm happy to now pass it over to Lisa to open the floor for questions from the audience.